Good evening and welcome to the caucus meeting for Florence City Council. First, we have a proclamation. And it is, whereas the city of Florence recognizes that cities are the economic engine of Kentucky, and more than 56% of Kentuckians reside within a city and rely on their city government to provide a variety of services that improve their quality of life, and whereas there are 408 cities within the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and whereas the goal of City Government Month is to raise public awareness of what all city governments across Kentucky do and how they impact the daily lives of their residents as well as visitors, whereas many citizens are now aware of the work done by city governments on their behalf and how critical this work is, and whereas the KLC Board of Directors has declared October 2025 as City Government Month in Kentucky, therefore Julie Abashan, Mayor of the City of Florence, and on behalf of the members of Florence City Council do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 City Government Month in the city of Florence and urge all citizens to join in this commemoration. Next, we have a presentation from the Cabinet for Health and Family Services. We have Clyde Jamison here and I believe Casey Bushelman here also if you'd come to the podium.
Thank you for giving us some time to speak tonight, Mayor and City Council. We are members of the Cabinet for Health and Family Services. We are actually stationed in Boone County. Our office is on 42 and it's right across from Ackerman Elementary. Myself and Casey, she grew up in Boone County and lives in Edgewood, and I'm a recent transplant from Campbell County and have made Boone County my home for the past two years and I'm really excited to not only live here but work here. So I'm a social service clinician too with the Cabinet for Health and Family Services, and I just kind of want to go, sorry, for one second. I might be having some technical difficulties. I'll leave that up there. But Casey does have a packet with a couple of different things with our statistics.
That was me.
If you can put up the one that has the information about the state of Kentucky. Yes, sir. So today I'm going to be sharing information about foster care in Kentucky and some statistics and informations on relative fictive kin and the benefits of adopting through foster care. Currently, the state of Kentucky has 8,605 children that are in foster care. Those children could be placed with a family member through our relative program. They could be placed with fictive kin or they could be placed in a non-familial foster home. Within the Northern Bluegrass Service Region, which is where Boone County is located, which serves Boone, Kenton, Campbell, Gallatin, Grant, Pendleton, Carroll, Owen, and Bourbon, Harrison, and I might be blanking on one, so I apologize. I think it's the county where Carla, Scott County as well. That's the big one. I apologize for that one. We have 1,224 children. In Boone County alone, we have 170 children. In Campbell County, we have 162, and in Kenton County, we have 427. So of the big three counties in Northern Kentucky, we do have the lowest number. But as you can see, both Kenton and Campbell have a large number of children that are in care, and oftentimes we find that many of our foster homes do come from Boone County. Currently, we have 58 DCBS foster homes and 74 PCC foster homes. Those agencies could be DCCH, they could be NECO, they could be Benchmark. As of this time, we have three groups that we most look at for placement, which would be newborns to five, which we have 57 children within Boone County that are a part of that age demographic, ages six to 11, which would be 33 children, and ages 12 to 21, which would be 80 children. To serve those children, we have the 58 homes and it's broken down into various aspects. I mean, we have 58 DCBS homes and 74 PCC homes. So the area of need would be those children ages six to 11 and 12 to 21. But we also have areas of need such as children who are medically complex, which would be children that could have complicated medical conditions like diabetes or have suffered from pediatric abusive head trauma. The biggest need, like I said, is children over seven. Along with the benefits of the non-familial foster care, we also have relative foster parents, which would be family members like grandparents, aunts, uncles, or siblings who care for children in foster care, or fictive kin, which would be close family friends or others with strong relationships to the child, not necessarily a biological person in their life, but I remember the term "framly" from T-Mobile a few years ago. That's kind of the term that I would classify those people. In order to be classified as a fictive kin, it could be someone who's a teacher in a child's life. It could also be a family friend. And we see a lot of times with younger children, we can make that leap a little bit, say if the child's under 12 months, if it's a friend of that child. But in order for that, or friend of that child's parent, in order for a person to be considered a fictive kin, there has to be a relationship with that child. If it wasn't for the relative fictive kin population, I feel like we would be in a much dire need for foster parents because in the last eight years that I have been a member of the RNC team, this population has stepped up and taken in a lot of our Some of the benefits for the children is maintaining the familial connections, family ties, reducing trauma with placement. Oftentimes, when we place a child in a relative or fictive kin home, we're placing them within their county of origin. Whereas if we're base, placing them with a non-familial foster parent, we could be placing them out of region. I'm sure everyone in this room wants to make sure that the kids in this city stay within the city, but we also often don't have that luxury when we're doing this type of work. Often with our program, our goal is the least restrictive environment. For our program, we have, like I said, the two types of approval, which would be the basic approval, which requires training, a home study paperwork, and home visits. And the training courses are seven classes that are held over a seven-week time period. The relative fictive kin do have a reduced standard, but they're able to take children right away. So if a child entered care and we identified a relative or fictive kin, they could take placement of that child tonight. Whereas a foster parent does go through a more rigorous program because we want to make sure that these people are the best fits for the children that we have. There are stipulations such as this must be decided during the initial removal. In regards to foster care, there are benefits for people who become foster parents, such as free instant tuition for children in cabinet's custody, medical cards, as well as monthly stipends that families receive until the child reaches the age of 21, and as well as adoption tax credits. So as I said, we are in need for foster parents. Right now, we are at 85% capacity as the state, and it is not uncommon for us to have a child that might be sleeping in a non-traditional placement. And by non-traditional placement, we mean sleeping in our office. Today, just before I came to meet with you all, I was asked to find a placement for a sibling set at 4:20, and fortunately, at 4:45, I was able to find someone who could take them for a day. So that is where we are right now. It has been hard, but we've been thankful for the families we have. And we ask by reaching out to you all if there are ways we can work together for the children of our Commonwealth, because we are all members of the Commonwealth, both as our civil servants and as members of the community. So Casey does have some paperwork that she is going to hand you all. And my ask of you all is, are there any events or any things that we can help with or ways that you can help us where we can work together for the citizens of our Commonwealth?
We have several events, and we do have vendors that come and showcase their business and be happy to have you at those events.
Awesome. Thank you.
To spread the word, this is such a valuable service that we need to provide to the kids of our Commonwealth, and we really appreciate you all for your dedication to those kids and all that you do. It's very important work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Wingo?
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
You're short on foster parents and families, I guess. One of the questions that I'd have for you, for people who think they might be interested in doing something like this, but they're not really sure they're ready to do it, but they're willing to go through the training program.
Yeah.
That's something that they could go ahead and do, and then when the time came that someone would, you know, a placement would become needed, they could make a decision whether they were ready to do it or not, correct?
So one of the best ways for people to see if they want to do it is providing respite. With respite, that is short-term care. Like when we place a kid in a home, we want that to be their last placement because there's a lot of trauma involved with foster care. There's the initial trauma of being removed, and then there is the indirect trauma that occurs while kids are in care. These are traumas that happen not at the fault of a caregiver or anything, but prime example, if we have a kid that disrupts a home, if it's not a good fit for the kid, it's not a good fit for the parents that are taking them in, it's in the best interest of the kid to leave, but that is also causing a secondary trauma that we don't think about. Whereas something like respite, that gives you the chance to test it out. And that is something that you can do without going through the full seven-week course. Casey does have a flyer about becoming a respite provider. That is something we always need because unfortunately, we don't have families who can take kids long-term, but we need those people who can prevent kids from being in the office. And I know for some people, it can be hard to commit to something like foster care because it is quite the commitment in regards to time. And I know everyone in this room is probably trying to squeeze 27 hours out of 24 each day, and then we have our own children at home or family members that we're taking care of. But even something like respite, or I know we take donations for the kids who are in the non-traditional placements because oftentimes they'll need to have food and various items of entertainment. Those are things that are not necessarily in our budget. Sometimes we have to get a little bit creative.
Are there things, you said you take donations, and you're talking about food and entertainment things. What other types of things? One of the things that I've read about over the years is a need for suitcases, things that would allow them to place their belongings in something besides a bag. So I didn't know.
Suitcases are something we would take. We ask that it's new items just because of the fact that we don't, I've never been specifically told why it has to be new, but we prefer them to be new. I think just due to the nature of just us not having access to facilities to clean them before we send them to a child, I think is the common sense of it all. But yes, suitcases. I know we've had people donate video game systems, gift cards for food vendors. We've even had community members just bring a warm meal to kids. One of the things we've had also is just community members saying, hey, like I can't take the kid in, but I can allow them to shower. And that can be just as important. So yeah, we don't have a criteria of things we don't accept. It's more like we'll find a use for it, or we'll find someone who can also find a use for it. Because we are very fortunate to have some clothing closets that are in conjunction with our program through the Foster Parent, or FAPA, which is our Foster Parent Support Group. We have a network, and we have the Giving Tree that's associated with one of our local churches.
Very good. Thank you. Leslie?
I noticed there was 80 children in Boone County. That's ages 12 to 21. I was wondering how much of that demographic is children with behavior issues as far as like defiance?
I would say that there, I don't have the statistics in regards to their behavior, but I would assume all children develop some behaviors through foster care. We even have kids as young as five getting diagnosed with severe mental health conditions. I don't feel like it's all behavioral. You think about those children who are ages 12 to 21, they've probably been in a system of trauma their whole entire life. So those behaviors that we're seeing as defiant are reactions to things that are severe trauma. I was a teacher for three years prior to working at the cabinet, and I was a very young and dumb man back then. And I think if I went back to education today, I would understand that a child, yes, they're being defiant, but when you're in a constant state of trauma, not knowing where your next meal could come from or where you're going to sleep at night, you revert back to those survival instincts. So yes, there are concerns about behaviors and everything, but we do provide training for more advanced behaviors. And there is someone, like say if it was an emergency, that would be on the other end of the phone 24 hours a day.
Thank you.
So I don't know if I totally gave the best answer for that.
Can I give my perspective, just being in foster care? I would say statistically, the older the child, most of the time it is defiance issues, parents struggling to be able to meet the needs to ensure they go to school, like school neglect, things like that. Younger kids, a lot of it is substance abuse, unfortunately, or just medical neglect. They don't make enough money to care for their children. I do know that we have an independent living program, which is really neat as well for kids 18 to 21, who we teach life skills. And so when they turn 18, we don't just dump them back out on the street. There's.
There are a lot of benefits. Like it's disheartening at times with kids who've been in the system their whole entire life, but there are also a lot of benefits with that. And a lot of kids, by the time they turn the age of 18, they want to be done with this. And honestly, I couldn't blame them. If I had someone watching over me from ages 12 to 18, they would have learned a lot of bad behaviors that I was engaged in. But also, I feel like those behaviors do get magnified by the fact that they are a child in care. Like I don't want to sound like I'm being dismissive of a child drinking or experimenting with tobacco or other substances, but those are common behaviors for children in their teens. And we don't go and remove kids from affluent areas for those, but if you're a child that's in the system already, that gets magnified. So something that could be typical teenage behaviors, oftentimes does get that lens of they're in foster care, they're from a family where there are a lot of issues, where if this was a family elsewhere that had the more affluence, had the resources, those might get set aside and handled differently as well.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Next, we have discussion over the Kentucky State Mutual Aid Agreement. We're fortunate to have Kevin Vogelpool here with us tonight. He is the Boone County Emergency Management Director. And Kevin, if you could share a little information about the statewide mutual aid agreement?
Sure. Thank you. So the statewide mutual aid agreement was agreed upon and signed for the first time in July, at the end of July of 2025. And it exists to provide a way for government entities that opt into this, which is what we would be doing, to provide mutual aid in the event of a disaster or request mutual aid in the event of a disaster. You can always do that without being in this, but this kind of cuts out the red tape. It cuts out the time, and it establishes parameters for being able to recoup costs. It gives you parameters for what law enforcement is allowed to operate under, for what fire EMS, the protocols that they are allowed to operate under. If they, the Florence Fire EMS Department has a medical director and has their own protocols they are allowed to operate under. And if they were to send an EMS crew to hazard Kentucky, that area has different protocols, different medical direction. This allows them to continue to operate as if they were working in the city of Florence with no legal recourse or anything else. It allows a whole gamut of different things. Insurance coverages are covered, workers' compensation claims, everything like that. Excuse me. And one of the biggest things, again, that everything always comes down to, because trust me, with some of the recent deployments that we've had, is reimbursement for cost when you send people out of your area and who is responsible for those costs. And it provides the understanding that you will get reimbursed. It's not like you're doing this gratis. It is an opt-in, so once you opt in, you are in it, and it would take action by the city council to opt back out of it. You are under no means required to opt into it at all. It's just if we were to have a disaster in the city of Florence, and you needed resources, you needed mutual aid from something, it's going to take a lot longer to go through the red tape at the state and go through the request process and approve things and find somebody that's willing to come and send people to do it. If we're in this system, they're going to find somebody else that's already in the system. If we have a massive fire and we need, you know, a brigade of engines and ladder trucks to come up here, we can put a request in, and the city of Lexington may say that we've opted in and we're willing to provide 10 engine companies to you with full crews for an unlimited period of time. Just let us know, and they're on their way within hours instead of days. Speaking with Chief Renn before this, we've both deployed to some of the disasters across the state in the last couple of years. And when you need resources, having to figure these things out on the fly while you're there really takes up a lot of valuable time and in fighting and different things. When everything's said and done, who's going to pay for what, who authorized what, with this being done and this being signed, the city identifies who the people are that are allowed to authorize either requesting mutual aid or providing mutual aid. One of the nice things with this region is we have a lot of resources. We have the ability to offer those resources out. We have ability to request them as well. We have a lot of subject matter experts on things, especially sitting in this room here, that can provide a wealth of help to some of the smaller counties in the state. This only pertains to within the borders of the state of Kentucky. It does not go out of the state of Kentucky. That is called EMAC, which is a whole other ball of wax that has to go directly through the state of Kentucky for those requests. So this would only pertain, we wouldn't be sending anybody to the city of Cincinnati. We wouldn't be sending anybody out of state or requesting anything from out of state based off of this agreement. So I will tell you, locally, every government organization that wishes to can opt into this. Right now, the county has opted in. Two of the fire districts have opted in. The rest of the fire districts are just waiting on their district board meetings to opt into the, to the agreement as well. Sheriff's Office is going to opt into it. They have a couple of different things they have to jump through because of it being the sheriff and not being a city agency. They have to operate a little bit differently with some of their mutual aid stuff. There's some legal things that they have to deal with, but they are getting ready to adopt this as well. So, and if anybody has any questions.
Kevin, surrounding cities, Earlinger, Elsmer, Covington, Wood, so so.
Kenton County is working through this now. Obviously, they have a much heavier lift than I do. I do not envy the position their EM director is in with all the cities they have and the tiny little other governmental entities that they have in Kenton and Campbell Counties, but they are going through the process now. Kenton County has adopted it. Most of the major cities over there have or are in the process of doing it.
Any others? Ms. Wingo?
Is this, I know it's applicable for police and fire, but what about public services?
Any service that the city has, if somebody were to reach out, and having experienced it myself, going to Western Kentucky after the tornadoes, they really needed help with finance and human resources. They had one finance person that was trying to deal with something for Graves County that they had never dealt with in their lives. And we were trying to get people to come down, treasurers from other counties, whatever it was, to help out with processes and different things. This will make that available. If we were like, hey, we can, we can send somebody from finance, we can send somebody from HR. Public Works is huge. One of the things that Tyler Hill with the, with the Public Works in Boone County, they're trying to work on what they call strike teams, public works resources across the state where the city of Florence can say, look, if we head to, we could send three dump trucks, a crew, and a skid steer to help with debris removal or to help, you know, clean ditch lines or reopen roads or repair bridges or whatever it is for, you know, a period of time. So absolutely. Great question.
Leslie?
Is there any cost to the taxpayers to be a part of this?
The cost is you're paying for your normal wages and the different things that you would have on the people when they deploy if they go someplace. However, the only way that you would approve this, if it's, if it's Josh, it's the one that says, yes, I'm approving this, there's a method in place for reimbursement of that. The requesting agency is required to pay within a timely manner. And they can say, look, we're willing to pay. We're going to pay you back. We need you for seven days. This is what it's going to cost for seven days. We'll send you down there, and they will reimburse that cost. So the city will be made whole. And it includes everything from personnel costs, and it is true cost of employment. So that includes benefits, retirement. Backfill is something that actually the law enforcement and the fire service really fought for to make sure. If the chief sends 10 people down, he's got to pay overtime to cover those spots. It covers the cost of that as well, and the wear and tear on the equipment, any fuel, any damage to any of the equipment, anything like that is covered under this by the requesting agency.
Any other discussion? Chief, did you have anything you wanted to add?
The big thing is, is when an emergency or something terrible happens, we are going to send people to help. People are going to send us someone to help. This is a playbook. This is a set of rules that everyone is basically under contract and has agreed to how we will perform in those circumstances, other than just a gentleman's agreement or, or whatever when something does happen. This gives us guidelines.
And to add to that, if someone were to request of the city something, you can deny the request. There's nothing that says you have to honor the request. If you're in a position, we don't have the manpower right now. We don't have the time. We have something major going on here. You can say, look, I can't honor the request at this time. There's no harm, no foul. Nobody looks at you bad. It's completely understood. This is a, we will supply help when we can. It's the, you know, the give and take of it. If we need help here, we have the ability to reach out through this, and just all I have to do is whoever is authorized to be the person to request, they call, they can go to me, we go to the state. I need this, and we'll have it in a couple of hours.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Kevin, for being here. All right, for the mayor's report, just a reminder, Florence residents should have received their tax bills noting the 3% reduction in the real estate property tax amount this year. The Boone County Sheriff's Office, they have a personnel here located at our finance counter along with our personnel to collect county property taxes. So you can walk in and do that at the finance department if you need to do so. City of Florence offices will be closed Monday, October 13th and observance of Columbus Day. Fall cleanup will take place Monday, October 13th through Sunday, October 19th for city of Florence residents. Drop-off is available at the Public Services Maintenance Facility at 7850 Tanner's Lane. Proof of residency is required. And for more information, you can contact the Public Services Department at 859-647-5416. The annual leaf collection program will run from October 20th through December 18th this year. For details or the collection schedule, you can visit the city website or call the Public Services Department at 859-647-5416. And join us for a spooktacular evening at Ya Halloween Fest on Tuesday, October 28th from 6 to 8 at Thomas More Stadium, home of the Florence Yalls. Enjoy vendors, treats for kids, and a fantastic fun for the whole family. For details, you can contact the Administration Department at 859-647-8177. Trick or treating will take place on Friday, October 31st from 6 to 8 p.m. Be sure to turn your porch light on if you would like to participate, and you can welcome your little ghouls and goblins. The Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event at Thomas More Stadium, home of the Florence Yalls, is scheduled for Saturday, November 1st from 9 to 2. A registration form must be filled out, and you may obtain the form on our website and the county website. You must be a Boone, Kenton, or Campbell resident to participate, and no businesses. Please contact the Boone County Coordinator Ken Points at 859-334-3151 if you have any questions. It's always a big, big turnout for that event. In partnership with Florence Christian Church, the city will host the Witness Tree Event November 1st through the 11th. Daily ceremonies begin at 8 a.m. The 11-day program raises awareness for the estimated 22 veterans lost to suicide each day. And it will feature readings, reflection, and the placing of 22 dog tags on the tree daily. Support resources will be available for participants. And if you have a few minutes at 8 a.m., any one of those mornings, please join us here on the Government Center campus. Speaking of veterans, join us for our, as we honor veterans at our annual Veterans Day Program on Saturday, November 8th at 2 p.m. at the Florence Government Center Community Rooms. And it's never too early to spread some holiday cheer. The Holiday Card Contest is back. Create your most creative and festive cards for our local seniors. Entries are due to the Administration Department by November 12th, and winners will be announced at the Christmas Tree Lighting on December 2nd for our K through 8 entries. Details are available on the city website or by calling 859-647-8177. Is there anyone on council who desires recognition? Ms. Chambers?
I was contacted by the, some of the people that use the skate park, and I asked Eric about, some of the lights were flickering, and I, you said that you have ordered some things to take care of that. So I was just wondering if you could give the community an update on that.
Thanks, Leslie. Anyone else? Any department heads?
I think she was.
Oh.
For update.
Oh, Eric, you got an update?
Yes. So first thing is, we did have some lights that were flickering, and we have ordered the sensors to replace them. We're getting some extra ones in case this happens in the future. And then we have reset the timers because. And then we have reset the timers because it's getting darker sooner, so we have reset those to come on at 6:00 p.m. now. So the lights, other than the one light, the rest of the lights are on at this point, but we should have that replaced as soon as it comes in.
And since we've approved the parks updates, do you have, have you looked at the timeline for your upgrades to that, to the skate park yet?
So the skate park is not in this current phase, the first phase, other than designing and thinking through how the lighting is going to look holistically. So that, right now, I don't even think we've started the design at this point, because we are focusing currently in Orleans, the fishing pier. And I know that's currently underway, and we're designing that. And then we've got a couple other things that are also underway, but over the next two years, that piece will be. And the maintenance of the existing, those were the two things at the skate park. The design of the lighting and where we can expand on the existing, and then the maintenance of the existing concrete are the two focus areas for this phase of the skate park.
Thank you. I jumped the gun. Anybody else on council desire recognition? Any department heads? Chief?
You all may have saw on our Facebook page that we donated a vest for our canine Ajax from a company, it's a nonprofit called Vestit Industries and Canines. Just want to say thank you to them. It's a great program that they do, giving vests to officers to protect our four-legged officer, so just want to say thanks to them.
Thank you, Chief, for the update. Anyone in the audience desire recognition?
Can we get photos of the dog in the suit?
It's on our Facebook.
Oh, cool. I'll check later.
All right, there is a, seeing none. There is a need for a closed session. There are a motion to go into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.8101C litigation proposed or pending against or behalf of the city. Ms. Whalen, second by Mr. Nguyen, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will return to this room to adjourn, but we do not anticipate any further business taking place tonight. Thank you all for coming.